September 12th, 2023, St. Joseph County Council Meeting is now called to order. Before we start tonight, I would like to welcome troop number 3572 to the council chambers tonight for our meeting. We want to welcome you. Thank you for coming. And at the suggestion of Councilman Tanner, who suggested that maybe the troop or one of the members of the troop would lead the meeting tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance, Claire has offered to come and lead tonight us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then that will be followed by Councilman Shetzel, who will give us the invocation. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very well, let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the fact that you've graced us with lives in this amazing country where we have the right to express ourselves, whether we be amongst those in power or whether we not. We thank you, Father God, for all material things that you've blessed our nation with. We ask for your forgiveness for our frailties and our shortcomings and your guidance in our future in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next up is petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion on an appointment?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to nominate the St. Joe County Economic Development Commission, Terry Bush.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a nomination, a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Bush, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bush is nominated to the St. Joseph County Economic Development Commission. May I have a motion on the minutes, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from the August meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the August council meeting are approved. That is all that we have for petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Next up is a report from the county auditor. Mr. Murphy.
Mr. President, we do have a report tonight. The State Department of Local Government Finance requires that the council, county fiscal body, shall review the estimated property tax limits and estimated reductions due to circuit breakers for each taxing unit. We've sent information, I think, to you. If you don't have it, we'll go ahead and email it to you after the meeting. But the, there's three items we'd like to just briefly touch on. First is the countywide circuit breaker report. And what it does is it lists for each unit in the county, what their circuit breaker losses are, their certified levy, the levy after, post-circuit breaker, which is, turns out to be your taxable levy. And so for St. Joseph County, our circuit breaker amount for 2023 was $12,484,202. That doesn't mean the property taxes were reduced from, this all has to do with the property tax caps that were implemented in 2008, 2009. So it doesn't mean that our property tax revenue has gone down during that period that much. It's just, that's, the circuit breaker is the difference between what it would have been under the old rules and what it is now under the 1%, 2%, 3% circuit breakers. So our amount actually, for 2023, it actually went down 9%. And that was due to higher assessed values. So it's mostly, primarily, circuit breaker losses go up, but in some cases, like ours last year, it went down. So wanted to make sure that you're aware of those two reports, and we'll distribute those to you electronically. Make sure you have those. The last item we wanted to tell you about is where the Department of Local Government Finance does a calculation of the maximum levy for each local unit in the county, and that's what these are. The local units have their own financial advisors, and so they're, they're on top of this stuff. But just in case they aren't, we're required to send a copy of the minutes that these are available in case they need those. So that's why we're coming to you tonight. The maximum levy for St. Joseph County is estimated to be $60,679,424 for 2024. But that gets revised during, after the budget is approved, the department has about, till the end of the year, to finalize our property tax rates and levies. And so that'll happen during that time period. So that's it for that report. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the auditor? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next up is report from the county commissioners.
Good evening. Just wanted to bring the council up to date. Recently, we awarded contracts to DLZ for the facility condition assessment of this building and other buildings, and the space allocation study to Abin Marsh to look at how departments' needs can be accommodated. Had a meeting this afternoon with Abin Marsh representatives. They are getting started. We intend on having a meeting with all department heads and elected officials to talk about what information they need to conduct that study for us. That'll be followed up, excuse me, followed up with a meeting with DLZ. We want them to concentrate on this building first, so that the council and commissioners will have a clear picture of what it's going to take to maintain the county city building going forward. There being no questions, I'll be back with input from those two studies in subsequent meetings.
Any questions for President Baxmeyer? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is report from any council special committee. Hearing none, we'll move on to first readings. Clerk, will you please read our first bill?
Bill number 114-23, Adornance of the St. Joseph County Council, Establishing the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Authority. Petitioner, Bill Shalio, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you. Bill number 114-23 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee.
Bill number 115-23, Adornance to Vacate a Public Way or Public Place Located Wholly Within the Unincorporated Portion of St. Joseph County Public Way or Public Place. Petitioner, Christina Marquez.
Bill number 115-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 116-23, Adornance to Terminate the Written Commitments and Final Site Plan Concerning the Rezoning of Property at 12525 Beckley Street and to Zone from B Business District to O Office District. Petitioner, Alliance Staffing LLC.
Bill number 116-23 will be assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee.
Bill number 117-23, Adornance, Approving the Petition for Special Use Filed by Warren Township Building Corporation for Property Being Located at 54911 Quince Road. Petitioner, Warren Township Building Corporation.
Bill number 117-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 118-23, Adornance, Approving the Petition for Special Use Filed by Superclean Corporation for Property Located at 56977 South Mayflower Road. Petitioner, Superclean Corporation.
Bill number 118-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 119-23, Adornance, Approving the Petition for Special Use Filed by Superclean Corporation for Property Located at 52144 State Road 933 Highway. Petitioner, DG Properties for LLC.
Bill number 119-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 120-23, Adornance, Approving the Petition for Special Use Filed by Anthony and Elizabeth Rooton for Property Located, Being Located at 12460 Weber Drive, otherwise known as Lot 1 of Vesper L. Kiefer Minor Subdivision. Petitioner, Anthony and Elizabeth Rooton.
Bill number 120-23 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 121-23, Adornance of the St. Joseph County Council, Amending Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 153 Subdivisions of St. Joseph County Code Regarding Surety for Completion of Improvements. Petitioner, Area Plan Commission.
Bill number 121-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 122-23, Adornance of the St. Joseph County Council, Amending Chapter 151 Building Standards of the St. Joseph County Code. Petitioner, Area Plan Commission.
Bill number 122-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 123-23, Adornance of the St. Joseph County Council, Amending Ordinance Number 48-22, St. Joseph County Public Nuisance Ordinance. Petitioner, Area Plan Commission.
Bill number 123-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 124-23, Adornance of the St. Joseph County Council, Amending Ordinance 49-22, Adornance Providing for the Removal and Disposal of Avanted Vehicles in the Enforcement of Indiana Code 9-22-I by the St. Joseph County Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth within the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County, and Creating a Fund for the Purpose of Implementing the Provisions of this Ordinance. Petitioner, Area Plan Commission.
Bill number 124-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 125-23, Adornance of the St. Joseph County Council, Amending Ordinance Number 50-22, St. Joseph County Weed and Rank Vegetation Control Ordinance. Petitioner, Area Plan Commission.
Bill number 125-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill number 126-23, Adornance, Amending and Supplementing an Appendix Schedule for Fines and Fees for the St. Joseph County Department of Health. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Department of Health.
Let's see, after so many land use, I forgot what our other committees are. Let's assign this one to the Health and Human Services Committee.
Forgot where I am. Bill number 127-23, Adornance, Reasing, Repealing, and Terminating Ordinance 59-82 as amended by Bill Number 78-82, Data Processing Board and Data Processing Agency. Petitioners, Amy Drake and Diana Hess.
Bill number 127-23 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee. That concludes our first readings for tonight. Next up is resolution. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 113-23?
Bill number 113-23, Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council Urging the Indiana Secretary of Education to Investigate Educational Opportunities Within the Unincorporated Areas of the County, and Urging Further Actions as Set Forth Herein. Petitioners, Joe Thomas, Amy Drake, Dan Shetzel, and Randy Pig.
Thank you. Let me first make a statement on resolutions. The council is not obligated to hold a public hearing on resolutions, but due to the nature of, and the interest in this particular resolution, we have decided to hold a public hearing on this resolution. Each side will have 30 minutes to present their side to the council. And so we are setting aside one hour of time for debate and discussion on this resolution. We will call first for those who are in favor. They will have 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. After that, we will have 30 minutes for those who wish to speak in opposition. Again, each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Okay? So that will be our protocol for the resolution tonight. Petitioner, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council Urging the Indiana Secretary of Education to Investigate Educational Opportunities Within the Unincorporated Areas of the County, and Urging Further Actions as Set Forth Herein. Whereas, a healthy and vibrant community school system is a vital part of the economic, social, and cultural well-being of the residents within the community. Whereas, a well-regarded school system can have a significant impact on whether a family chooses to move into a community and/or continues living there. Whereas, having school facilities located near residents can build stronger ties within a community. Whereas, there has been a concerning trend in St. Joseph County regarding closures of schools in the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County. Whereas, the South Bend Community School Corps has voted to close, consolidate, repurpose, or merge 10 schools in St. Joseph County over the last seven years. Whereas, despite the objections of many St. Joseph County residents, the South Bend Community School Corps voted on April 17th, 2023, to close Clay High School. Whereas, the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County, which include Green, Clay, Warren, and German Townships, have a combined population of roughly 55,000 people. Whereas, these unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County make up a substantial portion of the tax base that contributes to the South Bend School Community Corps. Whereas, the aforementioned areas will be left without a community-based high school to service those unincorporated areas should Clay High School close. Whereas, the voters located within the South Bend Community School Corps passed a $220 million bond referendum in June of 2020. Whereas, the aforementioned bond referendum was proposed to raise $20.8 million per year over eight years for the district's operating budgets, alongside $54 million for capital improvements. Whereas, in 2022, $16,738,876 of local property tax revenue received by South Bend Community School Corps was spent on debt service, and $4,597,852 of referendum dollars were allocated by South Bend Community School Corps to debt service. Whereas, the County Council of St. Joseph County, Indiana, is concerned regarding the expenditure of monies from the 2020 bond referendum and its impact on residents within the unincorporated areas of the county when school buildings are being closed. Whereas, the state of Indiana Secretary of Education may choose to reorganize and divide an existing school corporation if she considers further reorganization necessary to improve educational opportunities for the students in the county under Indiana Code 20-23-4-38B. Whereas, on June 15th, 2023, a request was made by Save Clay Incorporated, a nonprofit entity dedicated to saving Clay High School, requesting Indiana Secretary of Education, Dr. Katie Jenner, to conduct a study regarding whether the reorganization of the South Bend Community School Corps is warranted to create a new school corporation to service the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County. Whereas, the county council seeks to show its support for the request by Save Clay to the Indiana Secretary of Education to determine if a new school corporation would better service the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Joseph County, Indiana, as follows. One, the county council hereby states its support for the Secretary of Education to conduct a study regarding the creation of a new school corporation to service the unincorporated areas of St. Joseph County. And number two, the president of the county council and/or any member of the council may forward a copy of this resolution to the Indiana Secretary of Education.
Thank you. We will now open to public hearing on Bill Number 113-23. Want to remind everybody that you have a three-minute limit. You need to sign in at the clipboard, and you need to state your name and address for the record before you begin your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, and members of the council. My name is Peter J. Augustino with office at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. And I also represent Save Clay, Inc., and am also a concerned citizen with respect to this resolution. I'd like to talk first quickly about what the resolution does. The resolution does not establish another district. It seeks information, it seeks help, it seeks aid from the Secretary of Education in the state of Indiana. Why are we here? We're here because we can't get straight answers from the South Bend School Corporation. We can't get straight answers about finances. We can't get straight answers about where the $220 million referendum money went. We can't get answers about what the plan is on how you transition kids from Clay High School, 42% of which are minority, black students. Disproportionate impact on these students. We don't get straight answers from the school corporation. That's why we're seeking support to get the state, the Secretary of State, to conduct a study. Now, I would tell you on a personal note, in the last year, I've received, last six months, two requests to support programs for the South Bend schools, which I'm going to do on a financial level. But the question is, why? Why is South Bend schools asking for money to collect to help programs in the school corporation when they got $220 million? I'd like to know that answer. What unifies us in this room tonight, I hope, is the fact that we are all concerned for what's best for our students, education, and getting the right answers. And I'd like to remind you of something that our 35th president said. "The goal of education is the advancement of knowledge and the dissemination of truth." That was John F. Kennedy. And another great leader from that same era said, "Education must enable one to sift and weigh evidence, to discern the true from the false, the real from the unreal, and the facts from the fiction." That was Martin Luther King. A couple weeks ago, you gave the superintendent an opportunity to come over here and talk to you about concerns that this council had and that the citizens in Clay Township and German Township have, and the rest of the unincorporated area of the counties. And unfortunately, Dr. Cummings came here and gave you fiction. And I've given you a list of 10, 10 lies that he told you, and the truth that goes with it. And I hope that you can consider that. I hope that you discern the facts from the fiction and, and vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Root. Mr. Root? Can I ask you a question? Mr. Augustino, could you give us an update on the APRA requests that you filed in regards to the financial records that you were seeking from the school?
We, we have, since I last was here, and, and since the superintendent spoke to you, we did receive cursory responses, dismissive responses, I'll call them, from the school corporation. Basically, they provided no information. The most appalling response, I will tell you, I asked for the Accounts Payable voucher register, because that's the document that tells you who got paid, what money, for what account, from what fund. And on September 5th, 2023, I received a letter from Pamela Pelucheski on behalf of the school corporation, basically saying, "We don't have anything to give to you, and the Accounts Payable voucher register is not the name of a known record." That's another lie. And the reason I say that's another lie, because I have in front of me, from the South Bend School Corporation, a document that says, "Accounts Payable voucher register." I don't have the complete set of these, but I have been provided some of the information that we're looking for. This is an example of the type of dismissive, stalling, dodging that we get from the school corporation. So, at any rate, those are the types of responses that we receive, which are really no responses. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian Mottotso, attorney at law, 131 South Taylor Street, representing Save Clay, Inc. I want to get into what Pete just talked about. These 10 statements, you've seen them, the specifics of the type of lies that the South Bend Community School Corporation is peddling to you and to the public. And number one on this list is the fact that Dr. Cummings himself said in an email to a concerned mother who was going to send her child to Clay High School that there are no plans to close a high school. This is the same man who came before the county council and stated that Clay High School, it was a long time coming for its closing. This is the same person who stated that a majority of the public who took the survey wanted to see Clay High School closed. Another falsity, 50% of the people who took the survey stated they didn't want any schools closed. Another issue, he came before the county council and stated there were no problems with the finances of the district, and a recent report stated that. When the recent report from the State Board of Accounts stated just the opposite, that it made no determinations of the school district's financing and accounting practices. These are the kinds of lies, falsities, mistruths, half-truths that are being peddled to you and to the public on a regular basis. We want answers, and we appreciate that you're standing up for us, and we hope you vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Root, I'd like to ask a question.
Mr. Shetzel.
Christian, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
You said 50% of the people who took the survey said they didn't want any school to close. Was there any specific question in the survey particular to Clay, because he made the statement?
No. It was whether any schools would be closed, whether one school would be closed, or whether two schools would be closed.
Okay. So you're referencing Dr. Cummings' statement that Clay parents in the survey indicated they wanted Clay to close?
That's what he stated before you here at this council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, St. Joe County Council. Thank you for having us here today. I believe, my name is Robert Smith. I'm the president of Save Clay, Inc. I believe...
Address, sir? Address?
Oh, 53245 Brackenford Drive, South Bend. Thank you. I believe we are all here tonight unified for a single purpose, as Attorney Augustino indicated. That is to provide the best educational opportunities that provide for the best futures and careers for our children and their children. Save Clay, Inc. was formed to pursue this goal and mission. It is a domestic nonprofit political action board comprised of a diverse background of individuals. For example, retired teachers and administrators with over 100 years in education, a former school board member, a business owner. What do they have in common? They are parents, as you are, performing your civic duty, as we are, and citizens of Clay Township, and they want the best for their children. We have hard-working teachers, custodians, bus drivers, secretaries, paraprofessionals, police officers, cafeteria staff, et cetera, and, most importantly of all, our children and our parents. The voices of these citizens of Clay Township were heard loud and clear during last year's school board election. My opponent, the good Dr. Stuart Green, and myself supported Clay High School. My campaign sign said, "Save Clay, save our schools." In addition, as reflected in Stuart Green's vote with Costello and McCullough, it was four to three on that particular day. In addition, the voices were heard by 3,960 voters. 53.67% voted for the good Stuart Green. 3,418, 46,33% voted for myself. In addition, on November 7th, 2022, the good Dr. Green indicated at 6:00 PM on Christine Beam, Channel 22, "I on education," I repeat, "closing Clay High School," these are his words, "is off the table for this year and all future years." In addition, the good Ms. Amy Drake has stepped forward as our elected representative and with the others on the council to support those voices evident in the democracy that we spoke of Clay Township. The best starts with a safe and secure educational environment that provides for a quality learning environment so that all children have the best opportunity to obtain the best education to obtain an A or B. From my teaching and administrative experiences, 46 years...
Sir, your three minutes are up. I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
I'm very sorry. Within South Bend School, thank you for having me. We support the resolution and stand strong as we represent those voices in Clay Township. Thank you.
I'm gonna stick to my paper, because I'm a bit of a crier. Hello, my name is Jennifer Fox. I live at 18247 West Over Drive. I am currently a Clay Township resident and have been for 20 years. Prior to that, though, I lived all over the city's west side. I am a lifelong resident of South Bend. We moved frequently when I was little because we were poor and we rented. I was bused from the inner city at first to Eggleston, and later to Lafayette, Navarre, and Washington. I grew up envious of kids that could walk to their school, and they all seemed to live near each other. I was on the bus for what felt like forever, and kids in my neighborhood were bused to Harrison or Green as well. I married my husband in 2003, and he was a diehard colonial. He let me pick our home as long as it was in Clay District. We built our family less than a mile from that school. Our boys would be colonials, and they would live near their school when they started driving, which would ease my mind. It was perfect. Jim and Joe started playing school sports in 2018, and it's been a blessing to be able to volunteer and get them back and forth to Clay IA and Clay to volunteer and get them back and forth to Clay IA and Clay High just down the road. But last April, SBCSC voted to close our neighborhood high school. They crushed my world and without warning. In 2021, prior to the master facilities plan, a teacher told my son that Clay High would close in the upcoming years. I reached out with great concern to Dr. Cummings, and he replied to me quickly that they had no plans to close a high school. I sent my son to Clay in the fall of 2021 with confidence he would graduate a colonial. In May of 2022, after the first public meeting and survey took place with Fannie and Howie, two of the three scenarios would shut down Clay High School. I spoke to Dr. Stuart Green at that time with tears in my eyes. I told him my son lettered in two sports, and I didn't know whether or not to buy him a letter jacket. Board Member Green looked at me and said, "I'm so confident that Clay High will exist in some form, I would buy Jimmy the letter jacket myself." John Anella also told me he didn't believe closing Clay High was a viable option at the June 2022 board meeting. I trusted the superintendent, the board, and the process. I had several conversations with the consultants, who also assured me that my township was being heard, and even if Clay High did close, nothing would happen before my oldest graduated in 2025. I took every survey that has ever been emailed or posted on social media. There weren't 17 of them. I took three in regards to the facilities master's plan. I'm not sure how the other 14 were distributed because I never saw them. The final survey conducted by Fannie and Howie showed that 69% of the people affiliated with Clay wanted to keep all four high schools open. SBCSC chose to close our school anyway. There were other options that could have been looked at, moving a middle school into the feeder into Clay, putting CTE Center in an already well-equipped Clay High School, moving the Clay High program to Clay IA building. And so, I moved my boys to St. Joe this year because I cannot trust this administration. It hasn't been easy, and my boys are paying the price. I have always been an advocate for public school, but I want my boys as close to home as possible, and I will not have them in a district that does not have their best interests at heart. This corporation is pushing this community to private schools and charters. Please pass this resolution to see if it is feasible to start our own corporation in the county. South Bend Community School Corp. is only concerned with their city schools. They have closed Green, Hay, Eggleston, and now Warren and Clay. It is time to let the county have its own district. Thank you for your consideration.
Please refrain from public outbursts following the speakers, please, on both sides. I'm asking both sides to do that. Thank you.
Good evening. Marsha Hummel, 2663 Lake Shore. I have served this community as a school board representative for 16 years. After your last meeting, I approached Dr. Cummings after the meeting, and I asked him why he misrepresented the facts to you, our elected officials. The majority of the public surveys stated, "Keep four high schools open." The majority of the public surveys stated an interest in a career center if it were put in a current building. The majority of Clay residents said, "Keep four high schools open," and the city council passed a resolution to keep four high schools open. Money is not the issue. The Fanning Report, if you look at it, stated that 12.4 million will be needed in future renovations for the Sample Street Building. Another 2.2 million will be needed in future renovations for the Bendix Building. But rather than close those buildings that would not interrupt students or cause huge boundary changes, those are open, and they close a high school. A $220 million referendum, plus 98 million in COVID money that other school corporations are using to repair buildings. In fact, the information sent to the state of Indiana regarding the requirements for the referendum listed multiple repairs at Clay High. Our feeder system has been destroyed. Successful programs that were initiated by Clay have been moved to other high schools, and our high school has been neglected. The resolution before the council is to allow a study to see if change will improve the educational opportunities for our students. That's your decision, a study, a study to see. Not to do so is like a patient going before a doctor, and the doctor says, "We need to do some tests to find out what's wrong with you." And the patient answers, "Oh, I don't want to know." In order to explore, please vote yes. Thank you.
John Pachesny, 18420 Crown Hill Drive, Vice President of Save Clay. Members of the St. Joseph County Common Council, I ask you this. Did you believe the comment that Dr. Cummings made that the people of Clay Township voted to close Clay High? At the school board meeting last week, I called him a liar, and tonight I will call him a liar again. In my hands are three community meeting surveys and an option packet. Not one of them has a question, "Do you want Clay to close?" Most of them asked questions about the number of high schools, programs, along with middle schools and grade schools. The first survey dealt with a wide range of priorities. Only 20% of the comments came from the Clay District. The second survey centered around options for high schools and middle schools. One question was, "Which high school are you most affiliated with?" And only 297 of 1,091 replies said Clay. 53% wanted the new Career Center at Clay. The third community meeting presented a picture of people's ideas with the different concepts being discussed. There were no survey results. In the option packet, 75% asked not to go to three high schools. So where's the data? Where's the proof that Clay wanted Clay High School to close? Do you know this past school year, 4,800 kids were either in different corporations or charters? About 1,000 at Penn, 900 at Mishawaka, 300 at New Prairie, 250 John Glenn, and even nine paying full tuition at Edwardsburg. The new Paramount Charter exceeded their goal of 250 students, and they were capping it at 400. German Township was abandoned with schools long ago. Green is pulling out. Warren is now gone, and I'm sure most of the kids are going to New Prairie anyway. Center is not represented, and Clay is losing their high school. It is time to look at this plain and simple. The corporation does not want this to pass because over 50% of the tax money comes from the townships. They voted into having the Career Center at the Studer Baker Complex against people's wishes. Now it's time to investigate what is best for the taxpayers and children in all the townships and not the corporation. Outcomes are not better. We have one of the highest per capita student expenditures. Outcomes should be better. You should see how they spent the 90-some million dollars of Esther money. I have seen athletic uniforms, gym equipment, and even hotel rooms. So if you really support what we're trying to do, you will vote for this resolution and at least investigate it and expose the fraudulent spending habits of the corporation. And I hope the people who support this for Clay stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Melissa Ream. I live at 18258 Brussels Drive. I live in Clay Township. I'm a Clay High School graduate. Two of my four sons are Riley graduates, and two of them are currently at Riley High School. I worked at Kennedy Elementary before it was the academy. I have worked at Noonar Elementary, and I have been a part of SBCSC in some form for the last 35 years. And I have fought for a strong public school system. It is breaking my heart to see where we are at in the state of Indiana for public education. I am not a supporter of anyone who supports charters or vouchers. It is infuriating that our state legislators have passed bills that continue to attack public education, especially the law that allows a charter to purchase a property for a dollar. However, due to this law and the steps taken by SBCSC, I am concerned that vacating Clay High School will leave it open to take over by a charter school. Charter schools are not true public schools. They are not required to answer to taxpayers, do not have an elected board. So when, not if, the high school is taken over by a charter, it will no longer be a true public school. As a taxpayer in Clay Township, I voted for a referendum to continue to support Clay and other South Bend Community School Corporation schools. I attended meetings the school board had on the facility plans, and I took the surveys. I did not vote to close Clay High School, and I begged the board to slow down because they did not have the best plan yet. They passed it anyway. They planned to close Clay High School and leave it vacant. Since public education is my passion, I see two options at this time. One, close Clay and allow a charter to take over, or two, investigate an option to have a new public school district. I will choose a public education every time. I do not wish to see Clay ripped away from South Bend schools necessarily, but I also do not want to see a charter school in my district. Thank you.
Thank you.
June Pritchard, 5800 Summit Hill Court, Granger. Thank you for having us tonight. I recently learned South Bend School still has around $46 million unspent COVID money. What could they do with that money? They could update Clay High School. So the excuse South Bend Schools gave for closing Clay is due to costly repairs. The truth is, they've neglected Clay schools for years. We pay 40% of the property taxes, and how many years have the gyms at Clay been without air conditioning? They have updated all the other schools but not Clay's schools. They should use this COVID money on Clay. I bet they were going to blow it on the new CTE Center on a space they will lease. The other excuse to close Clay is population shifts have created low enrollment. Last year, 8,358 kids living in the South Bend School District attended school elsewhere. The census shows a third of the kids live in Clay and German Townships. So it seems wasteful to cart 7,200 kids to town every day when we have township schools out here. So specifically, why the low enrollment at Clay? Well, back in 2018, they closed Clay Middle School, the feeder, put up Clay IA. Last year, over 500 kids, Clay kids, followed their friends to Adams. I worry about property values when Clay closes, possibly causing higher county tax rates. I'm sure South Bend Schools had its study because they would have used it to reassure us that we wouldn't be harmed with the closure. But because they haven't said a word, this is an indication home values will suffer, and they aren't telling us. That might hurt county budgets, but not South Bend Schools. Dr. Cummings has already announced that he'll need an even larger referendum when these expire. We don't have the votes to stop them, so rightsizing was a lie, and taxes will go up. We are running out of time. They will destroy the high school next summer to keep us from leaving. We need to find a win-win solution for South Bend Schools and Clay Township schools to split. Please vote yes tonight, and if the state is listening, help us, please.
Paul and Astis, 5168 Orange Road. And as Consular Augustino had said about the Freedom of Information, I too asked for three questions from Freedom of Information, basically got the same answer. They can't extrapolate and get information from all these different things. I wasn't specific enough and things like that. It's all just form letters. So when Dr. Cummings did come to you, and you asked him about the referendum, and he stated over half has gone to the operation for the shortfalls and the circuit breaker. Just recently, I ran across the bill pay, which I brought to their attention at the last board meeting from August, and there was a bill for Indiana Urban, and all it said is for the superintendent's dues. And I'm assuming that's the new accolade he just got of the president of the Indiana Urban Association. And he's paying his dues out of the operating budget, and there is nothing that that particular accolade has anything to do with him being the superintendent of South Bend School, so I don't think that they should be paying that. And eventually, if he's right, then the referendum money is going to fill those shortfalls. Where do you think that money's going to come from? And it was $5,500. It'll come from the referendum and go to the operating budget, which he just used to pay for that bill. So then, they keep alluding to the CTE buildings also, and about, but the reality of the final determination, which I also have the paper from the courts, from the Department of Local Government and Finance, and they keep saying that it's in there that they're going to build a CTE building. Where in reality, it says, "The maintenance, enhancement, and expansion of curriculum and course offerings, the creation of additional opportunities for career pathways, including trade and career center course offerings." I don't see anything that says "buildings." Offerings means classes, courses, at any of the other programs or any of the other places that they have available. So here again, continuous overspending at the cost of all taxpayers. So when we hear that they are good stewards of taxpayer money, I don't believe it with how they are spending. And why hasn't the mayor been asking for a more stable public schools? I really think the mayor needs to get involved in this, even though I know we're not supposed to jump across those lines, stay-in-your-lane kind of ideas. And then, just recently in the news, the mayor, he was just in the news talking about renovating the commercial buildings, and he even said, he alluded to, "It was an intervention. It's invaluable not to just what's happening in this building, but what's going on here next, but what's happening with the rest of the neighborhood." Rest of the neighborhood, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I do support this resolution also.
President, council members. My name is Dave Stockstill. My address is 19080 Helen Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I'm a resident of Clay Township. I did not vote to close Clay High School. It is, in my opinion, closing Clay High School will impede the growth of the northern part of St. Joe County. Also, lower property values in the northern part of St. Joe County. There has been a high school in Clay Township since 1939. I'm asking the council to pass a resolution that is before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online that would like to speak in favor of the resolution? I do want to give anybody online a chance, so our 30 minutes are up, but we will take a speaker or two online if there was anybody online that wanted to speak in favor. Seeing no one, we will now move to those who wish to speak in opposition to the resolution. Please sign in, state your name and address for the record, and likewise, you have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Judy Fox. I live at 1603 O'Baywood Lane, Granger, Clay Township. My children attended Clay High School. I did fill out the surveys, and I thought I voted against closing Clay High School, so maybe I didn't read it properly. However, I am urging the council to vote no on this resolution. If the resolution read, as Mr. Augustino represented it, I actually might be up here speaking in support of it, but that's not really what it says. And I spoke to the sponsors of this resolution, and I was told by them that the purpose is to create a neighborhood school for Clay children by pulling other townships into a new school system. Well, the students in Warren Township have a neighborhood school, and the students in Green Township have a neighborhood school because they're not in the South Bend School Corporation. So it makes no sense. If that were the actual purpose of this, the resolution would talk about combining Clay and Harris Townships to adjacent townships and not pulling kids 15 miles across the county to create a new school system. The school system made the decision to close Clay High School. I don't agree with it, but they had surveys, public meetings, and the like. More people in Clay Township send their kids to Adams High School either because it's in their district or they're enrolled in the baccalaureate magnet. The resolution would cause the closing, if we make this new school system, would cause the closing of two of our best elementary schools, Darden and Swanson, and prevent over 500 families from sending their kids to Adams, the A-rated high school in our area. And these families have not had an opportunity to weigh in on this. I think the save that Clay parents have been duped. The movers of this resolution themselves aren't sending their kids to Clay High School, and I sympathize with the effort to save Clay High School, but I don't think this is the way to do it. Again, perhaps if the resolution were changed and really talking about just looking into what happened and not creating a new school system, I could support it. But what it's asking for is asking the state to take four of the whitest counties that surround South Bend, create a pretty much all-white school system, destroying the South Bend school corporations, leaving a largely minority population and a fiscally unstable school system. So what I ask the group tonight is neither yes or no. I ask you to table this and rewrite it so it actually says what Mr. Augustino said it said. I ask you to table this and rewrite it so it actually says what Mr. Augustino said it said.
Katrina Barron, 18820 Cherokee Lane, Clay Township. I am a homeowner in Clay Township. Many of, as you've heard, this is a complicated situation. And many of us, both pro and con, are worried about our property values. We're worried that when I bought my house, my kids were going to South Bend schools. I've been a parent of South Bend schools for 14 years. I am still a parent of a South Bend school kid. I studied the resolution, the South Bend School Corporation survey, and studied the data. And it's heartbreaking to me because I love Clay High School. I love their theater program. We go there. But I voted to close Clay because I think it is inevitable, given the demographics of St. Joseph County, we will have a plummeting of K-12 students in the coming years. And it makes the most sense for our students. It's best for our students. It's a heartbreaking decision, but somebody has to make those really hard decisions. Penn Harris Madison has 2/3 the students of South Bend School Corporation and 1/4 of the high schools, 1/4. They have a high school that is very, very, very far away from Granger. Granger property values are fine. They're sky-high. Clay Township would, the families of Clay Township would be closer to one of the three remaining high schools than Penn Harris Madison is. And Penn Harris Madison benefits from that economy of scale there. It made sense to do this. But mostly, I agree with everybody in this room that has said, this resolution does not do any of the things that we're coming to you and talking to you about. This is a poorly-written resolution with bad facts, like Green Township, no, is not in the South Bend School Corporation. It does not specify what, at all, what this study should be. It hands over control to a government appointee, one person in Indianapolis. It cedes, it abdicates our voices and our control over that. If you wanted a study that was robust and heard all of these voices and these complicated issues of funding, of money, of the CTE, then you would have written a resolution that does that. This resolution does not do that, and you should vote against it. And we should have a robust study that then maybe does make a step back and really looks at all of the complicated issues, but mandates that we have more meetings, that we have more voices heard, that we have more studies of where the money is going in all the constituencies. This resolution doesn't do that. It hands the control to Katie Jenner, out of our control completely. She could vote tomorrow to hand the whole Clay over to a charter like that. You think that that wouldn't happen? Of course it would. Vote no.
Can I ask her a quick question?
Yes.
Ma'am, I just have a couple of quick questions. You said you voted to close Clay.
I did.
How did, can you tell me the mechanics? How did you do that? Was that on a survey you saw?
On a survey, I voted to close Clay. And I've talked, I mean, Stuart Green, our Clay Township representative.
I'm trying to understand the mechanics of what you're saying.
Yeah.
When you say I voted to close Clay, was that on a survey? And you saw a question, do you want to close Clay?
I don't remember exactly, but I did, I talked to the school board members specifically. And by the way, the families of Clay Township vote with their feet. They vote with school choice. They do not send their kids to Clay High School.
I do have one more question. Wasn't Green Township's, wasn't that part of the South Bend School System?
It was, but they made a mutual and amicable decision to, well, more mutual and amicable than this. We could maybe agree on that.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
My name is Karen Nye. I live in 1906 Marine Street, South Bend. For 16 of the 27 and 1/2 years that I worked at the school corporation, I was privileged to sit in cabinet and board meetings, listening to the many challenges our urban corporation faced then. At retirement, I moved away for 10 years and lost touch with all the politics and posturing that goes on. Returning in 2021, I found that the state of our educational system here in terms of politics and posturing is worse, unfortunately. As enrollment has declined for SBCSC, in part due to vouchers for private schools, and as funding has been cut by federal and state legislation, the inevitable result is school closing. There is just no way to keep the same number of schools with less students and less funding. I am a strong supporter of the public school system, having been raised, public schools, my entire family, my son, my grandkids. The closing of Clay is sad for me. I haven't talked to one other retiree or current employee who isn't dismayed by it. So I understand why the Save Clay Group is upset and trying to take action to keep Clay open. However, asking for the establishment of another corporation will take more funding away from South Bend schools and will have a negative domino effect on the schools, students, and staff of the current SBCSC. Is that the real end goal here? The logistics of establishing another corporation are daunting. We already know that finding certified teachers is difficult, especially in certain specialty areas. Classroom staffing is a major concern. In addition to the school buildings that are proposed to be included in this resolution, there will have to be some place for administrative offices and the hiring of trained administrators, building maintenance services and personnel, possibly transportation, bus garage, and bus drivers. This is all in addition to repairs that are known to be needed. It is going to be very costly to the taxpayers of this school community and that new school community. Approaching the county council to ask DOE to study the formation of a new outlier corporation to service the unincorporated areas of St. Joe County is inappropriate. First, and as you know, the county council has no authority over the school corporation and should not be inserting itself as if it does. Second, these students are being served by SBCSC and will continue to be. Asking the county council to support this resolution is asking the council to not support the current students and schools in the incorporated areas of South Bend. And for those of you counselors who support this resolution and represent any portion of the incorporated South Bend schools, I hope the voters are listening. I ask that you oppose this resolution.
Good evening. My name is Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. I live within the bounds of the SBCSC. I am a taxpayer who voted for the $220 million in bond money. I'm a strong, strong supporter of public schools. And I'm very glad to see so many of you from my neighborhoods here tonight participating in democracy. It's good that you stand up for what you believe in. But I don't need a study to tell me that every year, for the past several years, the number of public school students in this area has been declining because of vouchers and students fleeing to charter schools and private schools. I don't need a study to tell me that when you take a unitary school district and try and rip it apart into two, that you're going to be duplicating administrative, busing, buying materials, you're going to be spending more money overall. I don't need the study to tell me that when, right now, the single tax base, the unified tax base that supports that one school is now going to be asked to spend more money on taxes because your expenses have just gone up. And the first line of this resolution, you can't help but notice, "A healthy and vibrant school community system is a vital part of the economic, social, and cultural well-being of the residents within that community." I agree in that, with that, and I believe in that. But pardon my skepticism if I don't point out that the original authors of that, one is a council member who doesn't send any of her children to any public schools in St. Joseph County, and another doesn't even live in the school district. So you all need to make sure you understand what's happening here. You're being used, I'm very sympathetic for you, but you're being used by politicians. This is going to raise your taxes, and the only people that are going to suffer over the next couple of years are your children because of the uncertainty that the supposed adults in the room are going to create by having this go on and on and on and divide our community. That is simply a wrong, wrong thing. Vote no. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Biederman. I live at 52380 Kennelworth Road in Clay Township. I've lived there for 30 years. Life moves on, huh? I love Clay High School. I, 10 years ago, my mentee graduated from Clay High School, my goddaughter. I mentored her all through. It's a wonderful school. I don't want to see it closed at all. The question in my mind, however, has to do with the way the resolution is framed and the question of what good will it do to separate Clay, South Bend Public Schools into two different school districts? I want to make two points. First, in listening to the discussion today, in reading the resolution, I haven't seen anything said about the, what is it, 2/3 of kids in the South Bend Public School Corporations who don't live in unincorporated areas? This would affect them tremendously, tremendously. Kids could no longer move to, go to Clay International Academy. I've got two other goddaughters are going there. They love the place, but they couldn't go because they'd be out of district. Now, you might say, well, they could probably go. They'd let them in. But they're poor. They don't have the money to, for their dad to drive them back and forth. They need buses. There're not going to be buses busing people back and forth across these. So I'm wondering, what do the rest of the kids in the South Bend Public School District get out of this other than if 50% of the tax dollars goes to the, from the unincorporated areas, and 2/3 of the kids or more live in the school district, live in the, you know, in the city limits? It's going to be less money, right? And there's no, I don't, whatever the superintendent said about enough money, less money, I don't understand that. All I know is there won't be enough. There's already not enough to go around. They don't have enough. I suggest people hang out in some of the public schools and see what's going on there. So what's going to go on with the rest of the kids that are in the South Bend Public School Corporation? How does dividing the school district in half help them at all? I just don't see that it does. I hope that's clear. My second point is, I am concerned, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, I'm concerned about the way the resolution is framed as a request to Dr. Katie Jenner to step in. I think, well, you can hear, we have people here who are smart. They work for the schools. They have a sense of how, of the budget. We're not lacking people in South Bend who understand how the school works. If we want a study of the finances, which is apparently, I didn't know before I came here, the big issue, one of the big issues, the finances, we can do it here. Why move to a, why move? Ultimately, the question becomes, I see no reason to, and Katie Jenner's from Kentucky. She just moved to Indiana. She doesn't have any notion of us.
Your time is up.
All right, I'm going to say one more thing.
Your time is up.
I know, but what I want to say, I know. You know what I'm going to say, right?
Your time is up.
All right, my time is up.
Good evening. Trina Robinson, 914 Laken Way West, NAACP president. Let me start off by saying the NAACP is not in favor of closing any of the schools. However, we cannot support the resolution presented by this council. One has to ask, why is the council pushing for a resolution without knowing the outcome of the court hearing that is scheduled for September 26 that has been filed by the Save Clay Group? It further behooves me, while certain council members are concerned with whether Clay closes when they do not send their children to public schools. It is these same council members who would like to see the word equity stripped from the website of the Health Department, yet they want the community at large to believe black children would be the most impacted by the closure of Clay. Well, at least that's the position of the Save Clay Group, which is supported by certain council members. I'm a little baffled how you are concerned about the black child, no. Also, you've said in the South Bend Tribune that equity language is Marxist. It also quoted this particular individual as saying, "Equity is a political term that advocates giving one group more, one group less, or taking away from one group to give to another." So are you saying it's okay to consider equity in this situation? The closing of Clay is bigger than all of us. When the NAACP spoke against Plan Z and Focus 2018, no one seemed to be concerned. These plans were the start of school choice. School choice is what created this monster. On July 8, 2002, a member of the LaSalle Group filed an amicus brief and asked an Appendix A titled "Evaluation of School Choice", written by Dr. Virginia Calvin. And Dr. Calvin stated many reasons why school choice would be a detriment of the corporation. But a couple of points she makes is, one, research indicates that choice tends to exacerbate segregation, not relieve it. And two, choice would call multi-year upheavals while redistricting will cause disruption for only one year. The NAACP is willing to work with anyone to hold the superintendent and the school board of trustees accountable for the education of all children. We will further work with anyone that would like to document areas in the consent decree where the corporation has failed the black students. What we cannot support is a resolution being pushed by certain council members who we know do not have the best interest of all children in the South Bend Community School Corporation at heart. I would urge the Save Clay Group to be very careful who you align yourself with. Aligning yourself with individuals that feel equity is Marxist overshadowed in any good you are trying to accomplish.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Agenda may not necessarily be theirs, but the NAACP supports public education.
Hello, good evening, and I want to thank you all for actually making the effort to have a more public forum in which we could actually discuss the benefits and detriments of either voting yes or no. I myself am Lionel Johnson. That's J-N-S-E-N. I live at 1305 Bridgetale Road in South Bend. I'm in the Adams School District. And I was responsible, working with Ruth Warren, to create the Chinese program at Clay. So in fact, I'm quite, I've been quite invested in Clay, even though I lived in the Adams Township. It was kind of in the center township. So it seems strange for me to be speaking in that regard. But what I'd like to say is, being somebody who's kind of between the space of, if you will, being an Adams parent but not a Clay parent, it seems to me that we all have a lot in common here. It strikes me that whether we're voting yes or no, there's an enormous amount of feeling, a lot of passion, which in fact, if we enable ourselves to generate enough light, we can produce, if you will, a meaningful decision that would come out of this. We need more light, less fire. But the fire is great. And I find myself very much in alignment with any number of the people that spoke for the resolution tonight. My strong feeling is that the resolution is really badly worded. It seems to me that if it's going to be a resolution that moves toward a plan for the future and which we're going to identify by some kind of mechanism, a study, it would be good to know what the guidelines are for the study. What actually is the study going to consist of? A feasibility study of some kind? Who's going to be a stakeholder in that? Who's going to be interviewed? What are they going to say? Is it going to be more of a public forum for it? Is it going to mean more money or less money? These are all things that are actually right before us tonight. And it seems to me that we're actually divided in a curious way in terms of the yes or no. But what I'm saying is, I think it's actually, it's actually, I think, irresponsible for us to go forward with a plan that for the most part seems to be badly articulated. And I would recommend strongly, I mean, I'm voting no on the resolution, but I'm actually at the same time suggesting, much like Judy Fox said earlier, that we should probably table it or do something with it. So in fact, we can actually turn the language of it into something that would enable us to accommodate what both the yes and nos actually want. Because I think in many ways, we're all part of a larger symphonic whole that we have yet to orchestrate. And right now, all we're doing is letting the junior high band play for the senior high band or the college band play for the grade school band. But at some level, our music is, if you will, cacophonous. And there's no reason for it to be a cacophonous as we speak here tonight. And I'm recommending strongly that we actually think about what we can find in common by way of a meaningful study that everybody can have a say in. way of a meaningful study that everybody can have a say in. Right, that's it. Thank you.
This will be our final speaker in the room, and then we will have the two people who have their hands raised online.
Thank you. I'm Ken Reiman. I live at 53105 Ironwood Road. I attended Darden Elementary, Clay Middle School, Clay High School as a child. I have two children that go to Swanson Elementary. Support public schools. I support there being private schools. I just don't support diverting public money into private schools. And I think that's what's got us to this situation. I really appreciate the comments on both sides of this. It has helped me to see new levels of the complexity. And as the last speaker indicated, I think we have more common ground around that than it may appear. I'm still very concerned about and object to this resolution, simply because I don't, number one, number one, if, if it was determined that there would be some people, say in Clay and German Townships, who might benefit from having, from having their own school system, I believe that's possible. But as one speaker indicated, I think that would come at the detriment of the wider communities' overall investment in public education. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about what, I mean, we do need to find some answers and some solutions going forward, clearly, to adequately fund our public schools. I just don't feel comfortable placing the decision, the potential for action to be taken by people who have an avowed commitment to diverting public dollars into private education. That's my objection. I'm a pastor. I have parishioners who teach at Clay High, students and teachers at Clay Middle, students at Swanson. I'm concerned for the whole community. Again, I do think it's possible that there could be some winners with this resolution. I just don't want there to be losers. I think we need to find a win-win. That's my concern. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now move to the two people had their hand raised online. I believe first up was Cheryl Nix.
Thank you. Cheryl Nix, 17901 Sable Ridge Drive, Clay Township. I taught in the South Bend Community School Corporation for 35 years and retired in 2011. In 2006, I was honored to be selected as the Corporation Teacher of the Year. My husband and I chose South Bend schools for our own two children who attended Darden Clay Middle School and graduated from Clay High School. They went on to complete college degrees and are both successfully employed and living in Indianapolis. We credit the corporation with giving them a great educational foundation that allowed them to meet and know children from diverse socioeconomic, racial, and religious backgrounds. This has served them well in their careers and in their lives. As a resident of Clay Township, the closing of Clay High School is heartbreaking, but attendance has dropped steadily over the past 10 years. Where was the concern and effort to change this when the problems began? And while we can look at magnet programs with the 2020 vision of hindsight, we must acknowledge the role of vouchers, charters, and a state law that allows families to send children outside of school district boundaries without paying tuition for causing much of this decline in enrollment. Our Indiana legislature's been cutting school funding, all while it sits on a $6 billion surplus. This has required public school systems to defer maintenance on buildings and tragically to close schools. For those who are working to save Clay, it is possible to oppose the closing of Clay High School and oppose this resolution because this resolution does nothing to guarantee that Clay High School could once again thrive as a high school. It does nothing to address the high cost of repairs and the burden to taxpayers to launch a new district. By calling on the state to support secession from SBCSC, the goals instead appear to be sowing mistrust in our public school system and causing it financial harm. As a resident of Clay Township, I stand in opposition to this resolution and I ask, actually, I'm begging you, to please vote no. This resolution is government overreach, a new school district is not a solution, and promoting the idea that urban and suburban communities must be divided is unbecoming to a body that looks to govern our county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Our 30 minutes are up, but I did say we would elect the two that were on there from the beginning to speak. So Ms. Brown, you will be our final speaker of the night on this topic.
Okay, I'll be brief. I agree with much of what has been said, Cheryl Nix, Mike McManus. I am a resident at 615 Preston Drive in South Bend. I don't have children in South Bend schools, but for 10 years, I was very closely involved with getting my three immigrant neighbor children through the South Bend schools, Noonar, Edison, and Adams. And it is only due to the heroic effort of a counselor to Adams that the third one was able to get his diploma from Adams. I am a strong supporter of public schools. I do not support charters. And I think, in terms of this resolution, it simply makes no sense. You don't just close one school. Clay High School is in a system of schools. It's a whole ecosystem. You're asking, "Let's do this rightsizing project all over again." I think it's impractical. I think there are political reasons this is being brought up. I do not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, that concludes our public hearing on Bill Number 113.
Hands up.
Sorry, sir, we set a time limit at the beginning, and we've given each side equal time. So with that, the public hearing is closed on Bill Number 113-23. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to pass.
Second. There was a motion to pass made by Ms. Drake and a second by, I'm sorry, by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root, I'd like to make a comment.
Mr. Schetzel.
The last two speakers, I found Mr. Johnson very entertaining. I thought his comments were well said. And Ken, I'm sorry I didn't catch your last name, I also enjoyed your comments. The problem I have, however, is that, from what I have seen, South Bend Community School Corporation has slow-played and even deflected attempts to better understand the situation. I do not see that behavior changing. Given that and the misrepresentations by Dr. Cummings to this committee, I see no other way forward but to ask the State Department of Education to conduct a study of the situation.
Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really have two main points that I'd like to make. And it's not in slight of any arguments for or against this resolution. I think everybody had very impassioned and pointed arguments that were valid. I agree with the comments with regard to, there's probably a lot more alignment in both sides than what may be obvious at the surface level. But I'm going to vote no for this, and it's for two very, very specific reasons. One, there is an impending lawsuit that we are not aware of what the outcome's gonna be. And two, we are not empowered to have any impact, direct or otherwise, on our local school districts. The school board, who is a duly elected body by the electorate within the South Bend Community School Corporation, has that duty. The Indiana State Legislature, who writes and crafts and modifies the laws of the state of Indiana, has that responsibility. The Indiana Department of Education and the Secretary of Education, as appointed by the governor, have that responsibility. We do not. This is representative of government overreach. And it would be one thing if it was an issue that affected directly public safety in our community. It'd be one thing that directly affected the economy of our greater, broader county. And in many ways, our schools obviously do impact those things. But there isn't a separate body dictating some of those things in the way that we can. We have oversight of the budgets and operations and things of that nature for our county police. We have budgets and operations and oversight of our economic development and redevelopment commissions and things of that nature. We do not have an elected responsibility or right to dictate how our schools are run. I am a proud parent of students who go to public schools. I have an opinion about vouchers and private school funding. It's not warranted for me to bring that up in this venue. I can vote for those things independently. I can reach out to my legislators and the Department of Education and the school board representatives for those responsibilities. It is not my right, duty, or responsibility to sidesly their responsibilities on this entity, in this body. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Following up on Councilman Tanner's remarks, which I agree with as far as our capacity to have oversight of the South Bend Community School Corporation, and I cannot in good conscience support a study, or say that I, as a counselor in the county, support a study of the South Bend schools by the State Secretary of Education. Again, I think the resolution is poorly worded, and I question whether it's really a Save Clay resolution, or from many of the comments and hearing from attorneys at the beginning, was it more of an attack South Bend Community School Corporation? And there was nobody here from, if the South Bend Community School Corporation is on trial, that's fine, but then they all need to be here to defend themselves in real time to the accusations and questions that were pointed at them. And I also would say that I am going to bring up the fact that I agree with all the people who point to the voucher programs, et cetera, that have taken away from our public school systems in the state of Indiana for over a decade now, and particularly the urban school districts, South Bend Community School Corporation being one. So, and starting this year, for those who don't know, anyone who earns, a family of four who earns $222,000 a year qualifies for a voucher. So that means public tax dollars are gonna subsidize essentially every student in the state of Indiana who wants to go to a private school. So your public school dollar, or your public taxes are gonna be funding private school students. So just so you know that. So that's a problem with our public schools. The teachers have not been respected. It's hard to find good teachers to even teach anymore, not just in Indiana but across the nation. You can't find good superintendents. Nobody wants to do it. School boards are under attack. Everyone's under attack in public schools. So I cannot support, and this would just be, this secession into a separate public school system would accomplish the same thing that vouchers are doing, which is to diminish a school corporation, an existing school corporation. And it's heartbreaking when any school closes. It was heartbreaking when Central High School closed, I'm sure, when LaSalle High School closed, for sure, when Jackson School, High School closed. It's heartbreaking whenever a school closes. It's horrible. Nobody wants to see that. And I would have loved to see Clay stay open, too. I would still like to see Clay stay open. And because, partly because I think it should, and partly because somebody else mentioned, they didn't want to see the building go to a charter school for a dollar. That's another problem that schools have had. They've had to turn over buildings that they've maintained for decades over to charter schools for a dollar. And now, if there is a new referendum, by the way, by the South Bend Community School Corporation, charter schools get some of that money. That was also passed downstate. So you better pay attention to your state legislation. So I cannot support this. Thank you.
Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, my comments may be a little bit redundant, but for the record, St. Joseph's County Council has no authority over the South Bend School Corporation. The school board members are elected officials, just like we are. This resolution represents a glaring example of government overreach. So in the spirit of proper protocol and professional respect, I cannot support this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Any other council member? Ms. Drake.
Sometimes somebody needs an advocate. And people that came to me from Save Clay did not feel heard by the South Bend schools. They didn't feel heard by the board members. And we listen to them, and if we can help them get answers, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to help them find accountability, to find transparency. All we're doing is asking for a study. We're asking for facts and information to make sure that kids have the best educational opportunities they can. No one should feel threatened by that. So I am, I'm not embarrassed to ask this question, for us to vote on this question. I think it's great that we can do that and support our community.
Thank you. Any other council member like to make a comment? Hearing non-cork, will you please take the roll on the bill?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Catanzright?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
No.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 5-4.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill Number 113-23 was passed by a vote of 5 to 4. That concludes resolutions. Next up is a public hearing on Liberty Township 2024 Budget. This will be the only budget that has a public hearing and a vote tonight, provided that we have a unanimous vote to suspend the rules. Cork, will you please read the next bill?
Bill Number 112-23, a resolution for the St. Joseph's County Council approving the 2024 budget submitted by Liberty Township.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. The response, motion by Mr. Schetzel, seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no, nays, the motion is approved. We will suspend the rules and move to a public hearing and a vote on Bill Number 112-23. Is the petitioner here? Petitioner.
Sue Ditmar, 65681 Sycamore Road, North Liberty. I'm the Liberty Township trustee, and I'm here this evening to ask you for your approval of our 2024 budget. I'm here because all of our township board members are also members of our fire department. There is an overall 5% increase for 2024. We're hoping to do good things, and I will certainly attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. McCormick, sorry, didn't see you there.
Tom McCormick, 66488 Sycamore Road, North Liberty. Serve as Liberty Township Board President.
Could you hold just for a second, sir? Let's close the doors. Thanks. Sorry about that, Mr. McCormick, go ahead.
Tom McCormick, 66488 Sycamore Road, North Liberty. Currently serve as Liberty Township Board President, Liberty Township firefighter, and of course, resident of Liberty Township. As our trustee mentioned, we cannot, as a board, approve our own budget. We can put it together, unfortunately, we work with the same business that you work with to prepare your budget in the county, and we prepare this at the same time and bring this to you because we need your vote of approval to be able to move forward in our township. And so my other two board members are not able to be here due to a death in the family, which is actually a 52-year veteran of our fire department. So we're asking for your support in this, to approve our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Seeing no one, either in person or online, the public hearing on Bill Number 112-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, Cork, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 112-23 was passed by a vote of 9-0. That concludes our public hearing on Liberty Township. Next up will be first reading and public hearing on the solid waste management, the airport authority, and the St. Joseph County 2024 budget. Cork, will you please read the first of those?
Bill Number 108-23, ordinance for appropriation tax rates, Budget Form 4, solid waste.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Root? Yeah. Good evening. My name is John Schwellness. I'm the director-
Just a moment, sir. Mr. Katanzright?
On the question, do we also have to suspend the rules if we are having a public hearing?
What?
Because we are having first reading, the public hearing, do we have to suspend the rules tonight for these?
Jamie, I don't believe so. I know that's not been our practice in the past on, because these will actually now go to committee, and then on for a final vote in October.
All right, thank you.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Oh, no problem. Good evening. My name is John Schwellness. I'm the director of the Solid Waste Management District. This is the second time that this budget for 2024 has been presented to the board, to the council. I just did want to point out there has been one change since that last time. I received a letter from the auditor's office on September 5th adjusting administrative assistance salaries. So that what you have in front of you now displays that salary change. Other than that, everything's the same as the first time we talked. We have a slight increase due to the fact that, obviously, we have higher costs to dispose of our hazardous waste, and we have a higher cost with our vendor who picks up the curbside recycling. Our overall budget goes up with all of this about 5%.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We'll move to the public hearing on the solid waste budget. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this budget? Seeing no one, either in person or online, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the solid waste budget? Again, seeing no one, that will conclude the public hearing on Bill Number 108-23, solid waste budget. Cork, will you please read our next bill?
Bill Number 109-23, ordinance for appropriations and tax rates, Budget Form 4, Airport Authority.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you, Council President, Council members. Mike Daigle, CEO, Executive Director of South Bend International Airport. It's been a slightly long evening already, so I'll give you an overview from the 30,000-foot level. We at the airport have seen continuous improvements in activity levels since the pandemic. However, we're still slightly less than our activities were at that time. We're still, however, working to make improvements to the organization, to the facilities, and to the services we provide. We continue to see improvements in activity levels in almost all areas. However, one of the things that continues to accelerate faster is the increasing cost in almost every single thing that we need to use to operate the airport. As you can see in the 2024 expense budget worksheets that we provided, our expense budget is really divided into operating categories. The first one, the operating expense category, allows us to operate on a daily basis, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That helps keep our staff going. The non-operating category are also the expenses primarily utilized for major improvements or capital purchases. That could be either for new equipment, improvements to current buildings, paved surfaces, fuel facilities, or other major developments. The total budget for 2024 is 70.5 million. 53 million of that is in the non-operating budget. That completes my comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Root, Mr. Katanzright?
No questions for Mr. Daigle, but just a comment. I've been made aware of an impasse that has occurred between the airport authority and the South Shore Commuter Railroad District. They've had an expired contract for the last 21 months between both entities that essentially, the airport authority, also a public transit authority, is demanding upwards of $500,000 a year from the South Shore line, to which they really can't afford to pay for, and they're also a public transportation entity. So I'm proposing that if we do pass 109-23 in October, that the increase in tax dollars which the airport authority would raise would go to fund whatever Mr. Daigle and his staff deem the costs are associated with having the South Shore come into the airport versus them continuing to demand more money from the railroad, which is operating right now at a 25 cent return on investment for every dollar they spend post-pandemic. They were at around 50 cents per dollar pre-pandemic, but they haven't recovered either. So that's my suggestion that if we do pass this in October, that any increase they receive on that, from the tax levy, go toward offsetting whatever cost Mr. Daigle and his staff thinks the South Shore should pay the, should pay the airport authority. It's just a recommendation.
Any other council questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Daigle, any thoughts on that recommendation?
Thank you, sir. Yes. As I said earlier, our capital budget is a little over $51.5 million. The major projects for next year, which we already have budgeted and also taken where the tax dollars will go, for the federal grant of almost $29 million that we possibly will receive, $2.9 million of that tax dollars goes to that budget, goes to that local share to continue to make those improvements. We also have additional payment repairs for the following year of a little over a million dollars. We also have money budgeted to replace a portion of the terminal roof, which is a five-year project that we're still underway to finishing for a little over $800,000 because the terminal roof is at the end of its useful life. That accounts for every anticipated tax dollar that the airport authority, we believe, will receive.
Any further comments or questions for the petitioner? From the council? Hearing none. We'll move to public hearing on Bill Number 109-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Either in person or online? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
I won't take that long. Thank you. My name is Mike McMahon, 51940 Lilac Road. I fully endorse and support Mr. Katanzright's suggestion. The South Bend, or the South Shore is going to be revamped and improved soon, and I think it will be a great economic boon to St. Joseph County. And I think we need to make sure that there aren't some financial difficulties that we could avoid now that don't somehow hold up or interfere with the expansion of the South Shore. Because I think, as someone who uses it to get back and forth to Chicago, I'm really looking forward to it being faster and more improved. So I think that's an excellent solution that Mr. Katanzright has raised.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Either in person or online? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 109-23 is now closed. We will move to our next bill. Mr. Murphy, will you please read our next bill?
Bill Number 110-23, ordinance for appropriation and tax rates, Budget Form 4, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Petitioner?
We have a presentation. It won't be real lengthy, but we'd like to give that to you.
Hi, I'm John Murphy, with offices, county auditor, with offices on the second floor, joined by Abby Doyle, Chief Deputy Auditor. We're going to tag-team this event. I'll start off talking about the first PowerPoint slide. I was really quite pleased with the efforts of the council. You don't need my affirmations or anything, but I just thought the level of effort that the council made, everyone to attend the meetings, to participate, was really, really good. There was a lot of, there was some disagreement, but I don't think anybody was disagreeable. I think I was really pleased with all of that. Some of the highlights for the budget were our minimum 5% salary increase for employees. We originally started with the idea of giving 3%, but based on the factors, revenue, reserves, and so forth, we're able to give 5%. I think President Root had a good idea for minimum salary increase for administrative staff, so we were able to increase those staffs, those positions more than 5%. And Abby did a great job quantifying that and doing an analysis of what the averages were for those positions in the budget. I was pleased that the FICA taxes, perf, health insurance, and liability insurance were included in the departmental budgets this year. Nothing wrong with how we did it last year, but it's better practice, it's the best practice, to include those costs with the department. So when you're looking at the auditor's office, you can tell the total cost of the office, for example. We were able to keep, increase, not increase the county health insurance allocation. It stays at $18,300 per employee. We don't differentiate between families, single, and so forth, so that's the average cost. And General Fund, Local Income Tax Fund, Cumulative Capital Development Fund, and Public Safety Local Income Tax, each had a small surplus, not millions, but just, you know, thousands. And I think that's, I started at the county in 2017, and I think that's the first time we've ever had that in the budget. Actually, you know, sometimes we achieve more than the budget. At the end of the year, we'll have a surplus, but I don't think we've ever budgeted those funds to have surpluses. So going to the next page. This is a summary of the revenue. Won't go through everything, but it's $221,175,262. So it's a big operation. We're a big county. I think maybe fifth largest in the state. Property taxes is the main source of income. Forty-seven, about 47 million of that is property taxes is from the General Fund. Cumulative Capital Development, about 3.2 million. Local income taxes have been increasing as the economy has started to improve. General Fund Local Income Tax shares about $14 million. The Lit Fund has received $16.8 million. So those are both really large sources of revenue. Then we have the gas tax, which funds the highway department and local roads and streets. Interest earnings up at the top left, you can see it up there, at 7.1 million. We're probably on par to receive maybe $10 million this year if trends continue. You can't just assume that, but I think that's helped us balance the budget as well. So then I'll go to total expenditures. Okay, total expenditures by function. This is how, there's two ways to classify expenditures. One is by function, which is how we do it here. General Government, which is the auditor's office, county council, commissioners, treasurer, those administrative functions is about $25 million. Public Works, which is a name for the highway department, and those functions are about $36 million. Public Safety, which is the police and fire, police and jail, and also EMA is about 51 million. So it's spread out pretty evenly. In most governments, you'll see public safety, you know, like maybe 60% of the budget, at least in ones I've worked at in the past. Other things to note on the budget, on the upper center to the left, internal service funds, those are the health insurance fund and the workers' compensation fund. Those aren't cost, you don't want to double count those. Those are really, those are just costs built to the other parts of the government to spread cost evenly. And so the total expenditures are $226,066,832. Now I think Abby might have some slides. Wanted to talk about the General Fund a little bit?
Okay, this one is the General Fund expenditures by function and how this is categorized. Lawn courts, these are your court, Superior Court, Circuit, probate, adult probation. Public Safety takes up a big majority of it, and that's categorized by police, jail, EMA, PSAP. Public Works, this is actually Location 70 when you're looking at it. It does not include highway. And Culture and Recreation, that is the History Museum. Health and Welfare, that is, that is the mental health that is state mandated. The General Fund expenditures by type. So this just breaks everything down, so it's a better visual. Total budget for 2024 is $85,291,456, with the largest expenditure of salaries and wages being at 54.5%. Our top, yes, our top five categories here would be the salaries, health insurance, retirement, mental health, and FICA. One thing to note, because other expenditures, it does look pretty high at 2.1 million, but these are just kind of your oddballs throughout the General Fund. So that's going to be your dues and subscriptions, printing, postage, marketing fees such as drug tests, cremation, ambulance fees. These are the kind of sorts that just kind of get pushed off because there's really no good place to put them. But with the reports that we provided you, you were able to see what those truly are throughout the budget process. Going to the next slide here. This is just how the county has trended with the General Fund budget from 2017 to 2024. It's just worth noting that from 2013, or 2023 to 2024, it's only a 6.6 increase, which includes that 5% salary increase. So I think that you guys, everybody, did a great job at keeping within a really balanced budget. And lastly, this is the budget summary. I know everybody has seen various versions of this, and this is the final version. But just to kind of touch base on those, on what John had said, General Fund, Lit Economic Development, Cumulative Capital Development, Lit Public Safety, these are showing at a small surplus, which is amazing. Like he had mentioned, it hasn't happened in his tenureship here. On this last slide here, that I do want to point out, the net surplus and net deficit. So some might look at this and think, gosh, how are they balanced if you have a deficit of 4.8? And I'd just like to explain that a little bit. Two things to point out. You have Fund 1169, which is local roads and streets, and Fund 1135, which is cumulative bridge, and they're budgeted at max capacity. And oftentimes, which is 3.4 million. But oftentimes, that's not going to be spent all within this year. So Sky, IPG, they're going to go out. They're going to get their POs, encumber the amounts. And then the project, that expenditure isn't going to hit probably until 2025, 2026. Another reason why this deficit is showing at 4.8 would be Fund 4926, which is hotel motel tax for the Mishawaka Sports Complex, 7404 Tourism Capital Development, and 7304 Hotel Motel Tax Convention Center. And that is because they're spending down some of their reserves. And so their total budget is 3.6 million. So those are just some key reasons as to why it's showing as a deficit. But I think that we can all say that we're really proud- But I think that we can all say that we're really proud with how the 2024 budget has turned out thus far. Any questions for us?
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioners? I'd like to just thank the auditor's office from, for the council as a whole. You thanked us, but you guys carry out the bulk of the work every day in putting in all the changes and rewriting the book how many times every time we do this. And you guys were phenomenal to work with this year. So in return, the council thanks you for your tireless efforts this year in helping us construct the budget. Thank you.
I'm not sure I can clap, I'm sorry. You're going to call me out on that?
I even clap, so you can get on me. And with that, we, any other further council questions for John or Abby? If not, let's move to the public hearing on Bill Number 110-23. Is there anyone either in person or online who'd like to speak in favor of this? Mr. Dalton?
Good evening, colleagues. Steve Dalton, Financial Advisor to the county. My office is in Maryville, Indiana. I thought since John and Abby did such a terrific job summarizing the last, whatever it was, 30 hours of budget sessions that we all sat through, I would just compliment you as well. But you don't get compliments for having put the time in, and you don't get compliments for having done the hard work. You get compliments for the final package. And a balanced budget is hard work. A balanced budget in the $220, $230 million category is a lot of work, a lot of funds, a lot of numbers, and some cuts that you guys had to make. Do you remember that when we first started, that first sheet Abby gave you, the General Fund showed an $8 million deficit? So that was $8 million ago that this group of the nine of you and the auditor's office and the three commissioners began work at the beginning of July. And I just want to give you compliments for having delivered a terrific budget. I hope you do adopt it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this budget? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room or online who'd like to speak in opposition to the budget? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 110-23 is now closed. We will move on to the next bill, 111-23. Mr. Murphy, will you please read it?
Bill Number 111-23, in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County, Indiana for the year 2024. We covered that pretty much in the presentation already, so no further comments.
I was hoping we'd get a second.
No further comments.
Thank you, yeah, we will. Any questions from the council on this for Mr. Murphy or Abby? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill Number 111-23. Is there anyone in the room or online who'd like to speak in favor of this? Seeing no one, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to 111-23? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 111-23 is now closed. These four bills will move to the council for a vote at the October public meeting. And so if you're wondering where the vote is tonight, I just want to let the public know that while we hear them tonight, we will vote on them in October. And with that, we conclude first readings and public hearings on the budgets. Next up is salary amendment, Bill Number 107-23. Clerk?
Bill Number 107-23, in ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, prosecutor?
Thank you. Committee report, please, Ms. Drake.
Bill Number 107-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, Bob Reisenhofer, Prosecutor's Office, offices on the 10th floor of this building. We're asking for a salary amendment and appropriation to supplement the interlocal agreement with the City of South Bend pays for the special victims, two investigators, and expenses. These are to cover expenses that was not included in the agreement. These costs will be paid out of the State Drug Forfeiture Fund from Prosecutor's Office. No increased funds from the counties required.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill Number 107-23. Is there anyone in person or online who wishes to speak in favor of this? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 107-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess, it was seconded by Councilman Catanz-Right. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Let the record show that Bill Number 107-23 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. That concludes our salary amendments. Next up is public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council in our August committee meeting. So we will move right to a public hearing on this. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 106-23?
Bill Number 106-23, in ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments hereenlisted of the St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. We will move to the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of Bill 106-23? Any item under that agenda? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to any item in 106-23? Seeing no one, the public hearing on 106-23 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz-Right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 107-23 was passed by a vote of 9 to 0. That concludes our fiscal matters for tonight. Next up will be land use planning, and we have Bill Number 102-23.
Bill Number 102-23, in ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioner Harold T. Coleman and David Pruitt, Jr.
Committee report, please, Mr. Fig.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill Number 102-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area Plan?
Good evening. This is Carl Rongrim, Area Plan Commission Staff. So first, we have this alley vacation located in Portis Township. The alley is bounded by Lexington Ave. on the west, Hartser on the north, Meadow View on the east. Staff has reviewed this petition and finds that it does meet all criteria for vacation. It will not hinder the growth and development of the neighborhood as the county has no further plans in the future to develop this area. It will not make access to any public ways inconvenient as all affected properties currently have means of accessing the public right-of-way as they are today, regardless of the alley. And then finally, there are no churches, schools, or other public buildings in the area that will be affected by this vacation. The petitioner is here, has waited patiently, and I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions for Area Plan? Seeing none, petitioner? Please state your name and address for the record.
Harold Coleman, 55472 Lexington Avenue. I have, these alleys border my property going east-west and north-south. I'd like to install a fence, get my dog out of the front yard, and tear down a couple of old buildings, sheds that are in the backyard, and put up a new garage. And approval of this bill would help me facilitate that, those changes. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone either in person or online who'd like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the bill? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
I live at 55454 Lexington. This alley is my only access to my backyard. My house pretty much fills the lot, so there's no passage between the front and the back without this alley that's behind the building. I grew up in this building, I mean, this home. My parents lived there. I was born in the timeframe that that home was bought by my parents, and my mother passed, and I moved in about a year ago or so. So this would definitely affect my access to my yard.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Can I speak?
Yeah, come forward. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Joshua Jones. I live at 55462 Lexington Avenue. And Harold Coleman has been a great neighbor for 18 years. My problem with this is we have a view from the records department, we have a view which Caroline from the plot department sent me to, and then we have a survey that I believe is about 23 years old from Mr. Coleman. All of them have discrepancies on where the property line is. And I'm under the impression that it's either all the alley or nothing. But I have pictures of the alley from the north-south to show you that it's completely impassable, both sides. I took pictures today to show you that there's woods there. You can't drive through it anymore. You haven't been able to for a long time. When I was young, the trash man used to drive through the alley and turn and come around Mr. Coleman's property and come out on Lexington. That's not possible anymore. Trees have grown in there, trees have been removed. It's on a hillside, the hillside is receding. And in order to turn through that alley, you have to drive up into the neighbor's yard in order to make a turn in a car, much, you're not going to make a turn in a trash truck anymore. I do have concerns about the alley being completely vacated because I do have a building that I park a car in off of that alley, and there's no driveway from Lexington coming back to that building. It's the alley that I use to get out. The alley's not maintained anymore. Just behind my house is maintained on both sides of the alley from me. Beyond that, you know, the alley completely goes unmaintained, and he wouldn't be the first person trying to avoid it, or to try to cause a, no way to get through the alley. It's already to that point that there's only one direction to go out, and that's north, back to Hartser from my property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
Can you please sign in so for the record? The two previous speakers, did you guys sign in?
Thank you.
I live at 55453 Berry Street, South Bend. I own the property at 55442 Lexington. That's on the corner there of Hartser and Lexington. I understand, and I've been told by Harold that this is an all-or-nothing proposition here, that the, you can't decide that just the east-west portion of the alley can be vacated, it has to be the entire alley. I'm not, I'm not interested in vacating the alley behind my house. I'm not as restricted as the other two people that are in opposition in access to the rear of my property. And I understand from the letter I received that speaking in opposition to this is one of the, one of the reasons of opposition is it cannot be...
That I don't want to pay extra taxes, which I don't want to do. And if someone, if it is vacated and the people behind me decide to put a fence down the middle of the alley, then that's going to make it difficult for me to maintain my side of the alley. There's about a three-foot tall wall there at the back of my property where it joins the alley. So that's going to be problematic for me. I think these alleys there in Ardmore, which if any of you ever take a ride around Ardmore, it needs some attention. There's a lot of things I could go over my three minutes with. I don't know how far I've gone, I didn't look at my watch. Take a ride around Ardmore sometime, these alleys are ridiculous. And I think you ought to let the man have what he wants, let him have the east-west part, leave the other part open for these fellows, have some common sense. And I understand you have to go by the letter of the laws and the whatever, and my vocabulary fails me. But I think you get what I mean. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
Robert Kraus, 17, 5,500 block, Meadow View, South Bend. I'm in agreement with the last gentleman that, that there should be access to that alleyway for those that can't get to their back end of their housing. And so I'm just in favor of keeping the alley and opposed of making it part of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Petitioner, you have five minutes to rebut anything that would set in opposition to your request.
As far as people from the east side of that north-south alley doing anything that are on the east side of that alley, those four lots have been vacated, vacant for the 23 years that I've lived on this property. The only ones that could have, could stop Joshua from getting in and out of his property would be the two gentlemen that spoke to you. Why they would do that, I don't know. But other than that, we'll deal with whatever we got to deal with. Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions for Area Plan, for Area Plan, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Was there anybody that came to the Area Plan meeting and remonstrated against this?
So vacations go straight to you guys, but we were not in contact with any of the remonstrators today.
After hearing some of the comments tonight, has that changed the thinking of Area Plan at all?
So, yeah, so when we looked at the accesses, we were just looking at the front. I wasn't aware that some of the properties' rear yards were blocked, would be blocked by this vacation.
So you're saying you are changing your opinion to a point after hearing the speakers?
I would say if the vacation would need to work for all neighbors.
And I'm also concerned about the statement about the discrepancies in the property lines. Do you have any comment on that?
That would, they would just need to get a survey, a modern survey.
No, I realize that, but I'm saying from your perspective. I mean, doesn't that, does that make you feel like this needs some further investigation?
We could look into it, yes. But typically, the advice there is it would have to be, they would have to get it resuraveled.
I think that'd be the first step.
Mr. Right.
Looking at it from a logical perspective.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Root. Carl, thank you so much, also for your patience, because it's a longer meeting. But when a vacation like this occurs, for all of our information, the public right-of-way gets transferred over to an adjacent property owner, either in part or in whole. Could you explain who absorbs the entirety or a portion of that public right-of-way?
So you're talking about the alley that's highlighted here?
Exactly.
Yeah, so that, the highlighted area gets basically split in half, right down the middle. And all the portion that touches each property goes, basically gets absorbed to that property.
So it would increase the acreage or proportion of acreage, decimal or otherwise, to each property owner?
Yeah, it's a slight increase in land for each... Yeah, it's a slight increase in land for each property owner.
And, and given that this is a fairly primitive right-of-way, it's not a well-maintained alley, it's certainly not paved by any measure, who, who does the, who is responsible for maintaining that today? And who would be responsible for maintaining it if the right-of-way was vacated?
Technically, since it's a public right-of-way, it would be the county's responsibility today. And if it's vacated, it would be each property owner.
I assumed as much, but I thank you for adding that to the public record. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, I have a question for you. Is there any time limit that we have to meet to pass a vacation? I know some of the zoning laws, we have to do them.
I'm not aware that this is time-sensitive, so if you want to, if you were wanting to table it in October. If we enjoy the council actions.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to table until the October meeting from Mr. Shetzel and seconded by Mr. Morton. I would encourage the petitioner to get with area plan and, and talk this through and see in light of some of the developments we learned tonight. And we will look at it again in, in a month. So with that said, all in favor of the motion to ta, first of all, is there any comment on the motion to table? Seeing none, all in favor to table this until the October meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 102-23 is tabled until the October meeting. Cork, will you please read our next bill?
Bill number 105-23, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, land usage of St. Joseph County Code regarding fences and accessory structures. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Good evening.
Committee report, please, Mr. Fig.
Mr. President, Bill number 105-23 comes of full counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, petitioner, or area plan?
This is Carl.
In this case, both.
So Sean did a really good job of describing these changes to you at the August committee hearing. But basically, in the past few months, our Board of Zoning Appeals has asked us to review some aspects of the zoning ordinance that they were constantly seeing and granting variances so that we might be able to streamline our permitting process. Both the BCA and Area Plan Commission Board have reviewed the changes, and they do forward this to you, well, the APC forwards this to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on this bill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of it? Can we see online, please, if there's anyone online? Not hearing anybody, we will move to those who wish to speak in opposition to the bill. Seeing none, public hearing on this bill is now closed. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Fig, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, Cork, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katsan's right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Yes. President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 105-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our land, use, and planning bills for tonight. Next, we move to unfinished business.
Ms. Root, I want to ask you, if I wanted to make a further comment on the ordinance that we passed tonight, would it be now or would it be during old business?
Which ordinance are you talking about?
The ordinance of asking the Secretary of State to look into the situation with South Bend.
Yeah, the time for that has passed. That should have been during council discussion after the motion was made.
So you couldn't, during unfinished or old business, you wouldn't be able to do that?
Well, I mean, if you, I guess in theory, you could make a motion. Jamie?
Yeah, so it's commentary. I think that could be brought up, arguing under old business earlier in the meeting. But if it's to change a vote, then someone who voted in favor of it would have to find, would have to make a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider? It's commentary, so.
Certainly at the discretion of the chair, of the meeting. And I guess I would see this as potentially under old business, as in something earlier in the meeting, certainly not privileged of the floor.
Right. That was my concern there. I don't want to set that precedent. Well, let's, we'll talk about it when we get to old business. And let's conduct our new business first. And we have a review approval of legal services by Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, so consistent with the new approach for the council to review legal services of the council attorney, I emailed my invoices for July and August to you all the first of the month. I haven't heard any questions from anyone yet, so here we are.
Any questions from the council for Mr. O'Brien? Seeing none, may we have a motion to accept the invoices from Mr. O'Brien?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept was made by Councilwoman Drake. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of accepting the invoices from Mr. O'Brien, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The invoices are accepted, and we will sign them and send them on to the auditor. Next up is under new businesses, a guarantee energy savings contract, annual savings report.
Right, so Mr. Root, this was emailed to Jen, who forwarded it to me, something a little out of the ordinary. I emailed council members on Wednesday, September ninth, September sixth. And the text of my email, I'm going to just read here because it explains what's going on. I'm attaching the report and summary document, which were attached to the email, related to the new business item titled Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract Annual Savings Report. The one-page summary report will need to be signed by President Root on behalf of the council. That's why it's on the agenda, since the execution of the document constitutes an action of the council, and should be done at a public meeting. So actually, it's the approval that has to be done at the public meeting, then Mr. Root can sign it tonight or anytime once it's approved. As the veteran council members will recall, this is a project that the council undertook pursuant to special legislation that permitted the council to contract for this energy savings program directly without the commissioner's approval or direct involvement. So there's an annual report and approval that needs to be undertaken each year. The two documents include the one-page DLGF, Energy Savings Contract Annual Savings Report that needs to be executed and then sent back to Abby Vale, she's the person at the contractor that sent it. And then there's a 28-page performance summary, looks like a variation of a PowerPoint document that explains how the savings were achieved in year four and quantified. I'll do my best to answer any questions if there are questions, but this is, understanding energy is not my.
Mr. O'Brien on the energy savings contract. Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept it and have the president sign it?
Motion to accept the energy savings contract.
Second.
Motion to accept and sign was made by Mr. Katsan's right. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Any further comment discussions on this? Seeing none, all in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. We will move the approval of the energy savings contract. That concludes new business. We are now to old business. And I, I guess I would just ask the whole council as a whole, do you have any objection to allowing Mr. Shetzel to make a comment at this point on something that was already on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Shetzel, you have the floor.
Okay, very quickly, I just want to assure my Democratic colleagues that as I look at this resolution, we are asking the proper authority, the Secretary of Education, to study the situation with South Bend schools, to take a look. We are not, I don't believe in any way we have superseded our authority because we are going to the authority over the South Bend schools and saying, please take a look at this. In all walks of life, we do this. We see something in an organization that we disagree with, and we go to the authority over that organization and say, please take a look at this. I would also say to Councilwoman Hess, as she was very passionate in her defense of public schools, as a public school teacher, I want to see all of my students succeed. But the simple fact is, all students do not fit the public school model. I have had an untold number of students. I've taught for ten years, five years at Riley, five years at Penn, to very different situations. I think we can all agree on that. And I have had students in both situations that were in very bad circumstances because the system was not good for them. I had students who were trampled, basically, by other students because of their religious beliefs. I had students who, because they were awkward and treated badly by other students, they were doing very poorly in school. I had students who couldn't handle the commotion and the noise, and their grades were very poor. And fortunately, because of the voucher system, their parents, regardless of how much money they make, because the system goes from zero to whatever the, whatever year we're talking about. Regardless of their income, they had the right to evaluate what was best for their child. We're giving power to parents. And so while I understand your passion for public schools, as a public school teacher, there is a place, and there is a need for an outlet for students who do not fit in the public school system. And I think vouchers do that. Mr. Root?
In spirit of fairness, we'll give any other council member a chance to make a comment.
And I think that's fair.
Mr. Shetzel, my no vote tonight was not against the students or their families having an opportunity. I think the opportunity's there with the South Bend Community School Corporation Board of Trustees, of which I live in the district, and I have two I vote for, an at-large member and a district member. And again, my kids go to South Bend Community School Corporation schools, as well as private schools both. But if I have a question, I call my at-large or my district member and ask them those questions. I would hope that these, I'm sorry, the school board members, I would hope that this group would be attending school board meetings and getting their answers there. That's where those answers, questions should be directed, I think, to get the answers. I know they're saying they haven't gotten the answers from Superintendent Cummings, but are they getting the answers from the school board? And that's where I think this probably should start. It's kind of like, why are we jumping to the state superintendent of education when maybe they should be starting at the local school board, meaning to deal with the South Bend Community School Corporation board members? And I just felt it wasn't appropriate for us. I would want the South Bend Community School Corporation coming to us and passing a resolution or ordinance to direct us to do something, because that's really not in their purview. And I don't think it's in our purview to direct someone else, an outside agency, to look into the South Bend Community School Corporation on another issue, because that's, that's what I hope those elected board of trustees do, is they are the caretakers of the school corporation. So that's why I voted no.
Yeah, I understand your position.
I'd just like to make one more comment, if that's okay, Ms. Hess. So I don't have problems with kids who go to private schools, or if certainly there's vouchers for kids in need who need that. But I do have problems in now, all of a sudden, parents who make $222,000 a year get vouchers. We already had $29 million to at least, in a quick cursory look I took at voucher spending in St. Joe County in 2022, $29 million went to private schools in the county. So that's a lot of money that went, was diverted away from public schools. A lot of students, too, 4,500-plus. So that's a concern I have, because that does impact the public schools that I felt were being really under attack tonight. And the other comment I'd like to make, just like, we have a very complicated budget. We talked about it tonight, how hard it was to get through all that, all the sessions it took. The public, the general public, doesn't really understand some of our budget. We don't, they don't understand our spending, our deficits, our, but they have assumptions of how, well, you could have spent that money better, you should have done that better. And so I think it's, like somebody said, it's a complex, complicated issue. And again, if this would have been a resolution that said, let's take another look at this as a community, I might have been able to support that. Open it up so that the community could have more input and take it back and say, we would recommend, we would suggest maybe that the schools take a look, re-look at the situation as a community with more input, because I think one of the last gentleman who spoke said, there's probably a lot more in common that people had tonight in this room, but it's now gotten so heated, and we're now really, it looks like an attack on the South Bend Community School Corporation instead of a Save Clay situation. Save Clay within the South Bend Community School Corporation, that's, those are two different things. So that was my, that was another concern I had, so. And I know we, I don't want to keep debating this.
All right. Is there any other council member that hasn't made a comment that would like to in the spirit of fairness?
You know what?
Mr. Morton?
Yeah, I, I did make my statement before my vote, but I'm just going to say, I don't care what the issue is or will be. If any school board member attempted to do what we're attempting to do under our auspices, what, what we're voted to do, elected to do, I would be appalled. And that's why I made the statement about respect for the elected officials of the school board. If the school board came to a county council meeting and wanted a resolution about something that was under our purview, I would be appalled. That's just me.
You mean if they went to a school board meeting and?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Exactly. Or came here, whatever, that's what I'm saying. You know, they have their purview, we have ours, as elected officials.
As does the Secretary of State or Secretary of Education.
But, but if, if the school board voted the way they did, agree or disagree, it's not up to us to get involved in this. That's just my opinion.
All right.
Any other council member who has not made a statement, wish to make a statement?
I'll be writing.
Seeing none from those who haven't spoken, we are going to conclude old business and move to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is limited to three minutes to any item not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody who'd like to take advantage of privilege of the floor?
I would, ma'am. But I don't want to abuse it. I just want one minute to respond to the responses.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Nothing on tonight's agenda. Council members, I gave them a little bit of a privilege here, but that's not the point of privilege of the floor.
Understood. Understood. This was not, it's related, it's not, was not on the agenda. It has to do with a lawsuit that's been filed by, by Save Clay?
I would say that's on the agenda. Anything with Save Clay, I think, is on the agenda.
Thank you for your time, your patience. I got aspirin out in the car, if you need any. You, I sent you all an email and to the commissioners an email regarding the battery plant in New Some, some things have even elevated my angst a little more. I attended a, I was invited to attend the FEMA workshop at Howard Park last week, and I had the pleasure of sitting next to a bunch of firemen. And during one of the breaks, we got to talking about electric vehicles, and I got to listen to how they were trained to put out the fire in an electric vehicle, in a Tesla. How you pour water on it for two hours, walk away for an hour, come back and pour water on it for two more hours, walk away for an hour, come back and pour water on it for another hour. That's one Tesla. So in, in connection with my email and all the problems I already had with the battery plant, saying it did not belong in New Carlow, I asked one of the firemen, so what would you do with 10,000 of these things in one location? And he who had the training said, I don't know. It's, it's time to tell GM, yeah, go ahead, they're, I know, they're working out there today. Things started out there today. It's time to say, and, and that's why we have attorneys, figure out how much money GM has sunk into this project, agree to an amount to pay them off, and show them the door. That does not belong in our, at least in our end of the county, over top of our aquifer. I don't know what's in Ohio, like I said in the email. I don't know what's under their site in Ohio. It might be 10, 10 miles of rock. Under ours, we've got a, you can see the aquifer in some places, you can see the water level in some places, and there is very little, and in some places, no clay layer. If you bring the, the battery fires, when you put out that battery, that stuff that you're washing off and trying to put out that fire is going somewhere down into our aquifer. Now, along with that NP, NMP, the solvent, that is like a paint remover, that we find we find out, this, this procedure, we're told, is, the people wear white gloves, they wear surgical scrubs that work in there. It's a real pristine environment, and we're saying, great, that's no pollution in the air, they're not really going to pollute anything. Then we hear this mess in Ohio. Show them the door, pay them off, get them out of here, let's get somebody else in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to take advantage of the privilege of the floor? Is there anyone online who'd like to take advantage of privilege of the floor? Seeing no, Steve Whitmer, go ahead, you have three minutes to address the council, please give your name and address.
Good evening, Steve Whitmer, 56745 Eastview Drive, Osceola, Indiana. I wanted to address this religion called climate change. This so-called climate change has become a religion constantly regurgitated by the Marxist left. Let me just state what happened in 1930 with respect to the temperatures recorded that year. In July of 1930, eight days, starting with the 19th, 102 degrees, 106 degrees, 103 degrees, 100 degrees, 94, 93, 100 and 100. That's 19th through the 26th. The next month, August 2nd through the 9th, it was 94 degrees, 100 degrees, 102 degrees, 102 degrees, 88 degrees, 97 degrees, 107 degrees, and 102 degrees. These temperatures were recorded before World War II, before all the fossil fuels were consumed to manufacture the war machine for the United States, Great Britain, Germany, and Japan, before all the battleships, Liberty ships, tanks, aircraft, guns, and explosives were manufactured. So stop your Marxist rhetoric wrapped into your so-called cloak of religion. This climate change is a natural fluctuation of our planet and is not necessarily caused by the consumption of fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for privilege of the floor, anybody else? Hearing none, privilege of the floor is concluded, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.